Roxanne, this is John. Can you hear me?
Linda, you're muted.
This meeting to order. Roxanne, would you read the call of the public hearing, please?
The Leger Town will conduct a video conference public hearing on Wednesday, July the 22nd at 6:30 PM to receive comments and recommendations regarding the following. One, an ordinance regarding control of dogs in park and recreation areas, school property, and historic districts. Two, proposed amendments to ordinance 200-010, an ordinance establishing retirement plans, and a retirement board for the town of Leger, general government, and Board of Education employees. And three, proposed amendments to ordinance 100-011, an ordinance establishing a youth and social services board for the town of Leger. Interested persons may submit written communications to towncouncilledgerct.org. Please join the meeting from your computer, tablet, or smartphone. Remote meeting information for the video conference and draft ordinances will be provided on the town's website at www-ledgerct.org, located under the Agendas and Minutes tab. Stated at Leger, Connecticut, this 13th day of July for the Leger Town Council, Linda C. Davis, Chairman.
Thank you, Roxanne. Unless there's any objection, what I would like to do is each ordinance, separate, then comments on that particular ordinance, then to the next ordinance, then comments on that, et cetera. I think that'll be a little tidier. So, Andre, if you would like to begin with the presentation of the first.
Sure. So, the first ordinance has already been to public hearing once. Based on that feedback, we brought it back to committee to make some revisions. At the first hearing, there was largely support for the idea of passing a leash ordinance in addition to state statute. I've spoken with Chief Rich and Christina, our ACO, and they both reported that state statute allowed them full latitude to do what they need to do in terms of nuisance animals, especially roaming and, you know, people not cleaning up after their animals. The state statute doesn't address leashes, but they explicitly leave that up to municipalities. So, that's what we're addressing here. The language requires that on any school property, historic property, sidewalks, streets, our parks, beaches, fields, rec areas, anything under the control of Leger Parks and Recs, that your animal be leashed on nothing longer than a 10-foot leash. Scott Johnson, our Park and Rec Director, has also re-state, you know, there are certain areas that need to be completely pet-free, like we don't need dogs on the immediate playground. So, basically, this just, it defined the leash needs to be no longer than 10 feet. The other thing is that it also allows for leash-free areas designated by the, oh, I'm losing it. I have too many screens over here. The Conservation Commission. If they would like to designate an area leash-free, they, this statute, this ordinance allows for that. I think that's probably all that needs to be said at this point. Linda, you're muted.
Doing that. At this time, I will ask if any members of the public have any comments on that particular ordinance.
This is Nate Woody. If you can hear me, I have a couple of comments. You guys can hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So, first, just a couple of technical comments on the wording of the ordinance. The first in Section 2 Authority, the first sentence there that begins Wild Connecticut General Statute, that's not a sentence. I tried to search in there for the missing punctuation or word. I'm not sure what it, what is missing, but that's not a sentence. And so, you might just want to, as you deliberate, review and make sure that that's clear. The second comment I'll make is nowhere in 22364 does it grant municipal, municipalities the authority to create a leash ordinance. You can do it, but show someone, I issue my challenge again for someone to show me the words in that chapter that grants that authority. The second comment I have is in Section 3. I think that the dogs or domestic animals are not permitted in playgrounds. Should be bullet number five. The five is missing. The second thing is all of those other bullets are set up to be the completion of the sentence where it says domestic animal shall. So, I think you want to reword that one to something to be like domestic animal shall, or any person shall keep their animal off of the playgrounds or something like that so that it's the same as all the other bullet points. I'm happy to see the change allowing Conservation Commission to designate rules for grounds that are under their administrative control. I think that's, that's a step in the right direction. The last technical comment is under violations. It's been changed, the bullet three has been changed, so the Chief of Police shall designate a town official or employee to be empowered. I still maintain that I think this has got to be the Animal Control Officer. Certainly, if you read 22, you know, Section 22332 seems pretty clear that the Animal Control Officer shall be responsible for the enforcement of this chapter. And so, I'm not sure that that can be designated away to, you know, sort of a, any random person. I think you also have to consider that if you have a situation where you have an out-of-control animal, or if you have a situation that escalates, you want something like the ACO or the police who are trained to deal with those situations, let alone if someone, you know, tries to fight one of these tickets. Someone is gonna, gonna have to know that policy. They're gonna have to go to court or do that sort of thing. So, in my mind, you should really just change that to ACO and the police, which is what all of the rest of Chapter 22 does. My final comment is I just ask, as you deliberate this, town council members should consider two things. The first is signage and how this is going to be noticed. So, there's going to be lots of places where these rules need to be made clear to everyone who is actually using the properties. And so, some real thought about where, how those signs are going to be displayed, what they're going to look like, how they're going to be paid for needs to be had. The second is how is this going to be enforced? So, I'm not against dog control ordinances, but I don't see how this is going to be enforced any better or any different than the statutes that we've already got. You know, one of the things I really heard at that first public hearing was the statutes weren't being enforced. And so, problem dogs weren't being dealt with with the state statutes. So, if that's true, trying to tag a $97 fine onto something isn't going to help that any. So, I really ask the council members, think about those two things when they deliberate. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Any other comments on that ordinance? Hearing none. Andre, would you move on to the second?
Could I just address Nate? Yeah. Nate, thank you. If you have your comments in writing, I would, I would love to incorporate. You helped me a great deal at the first hearing by pointing out that this was really largely a problem of enforcement. And the signage issue is something we've already started to talk back and forth about with Park and Rec. I agree with you 100%. It's an enforcement issue. The Chief of Police and the ACO feel like they have, they already have full latitude. The thing they said that, that hit me was that the problem is people don't call the police. They get online and they complain on social media. So, if, if, you know what, that could continue to happen. And, and then you'll be exactly right. This ordinance will do bubkis. So, but we hope, part of the, part of what we hope to do is have better signage in more obvious locations and include the ACO's phone number. So, for what that's worth. But I'd love to see your, your, your other comments. That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy. I wrote a version of that so that you have it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Andre, if you want to move to the next ordinance or the next amendments to the ordinance?
So, we're moving on to the pension draft. Okay, this one is largely administrative. The, the pension board needs to do just a couple of things. One is rename itself the Retirement Board as the town sort of moves away from its pension and into other retirement plans. And the other thing is they wanted to add a couple of, I'm sorry, you guys, it's the end of the day. Geez Louise. Alternate members. Oh, my word. That's really it.
John, could you address this as Chair of the Pension Board?
Yes. As Andre said, those were the substantive changes. The pension issue, pension benefits for town officials, town employees has undergone quite a transition over the past, oh, actually 10 or 11 years, where we transitioned all new employees, beginning in 2009, with administrative or with supervisory employees to a defined contribution plan. We, as a matter of fact, that has been so successful to the fact that more than half of our employees now are in that plan rather than the defined benefit plan. But because we have the two plans operating simultaneously, we needed an ordinance that would empower the Pension Board to, to oversee those, oversee those two plans. In addition to that, there are elective plans that people can contribute to, employees, and that includes some Board of Ed employees. And so, that has also been added to this. The one change that's beyond what any of you have seen, and Roxanne, did you notify the council about this?
Yes, I did.
Okay. It, I've, we've been involved in this for months. And after a while, you, you know, I know a little bit of what Andre feels. But it dawned on me that we're renaming it the Retirement Board, and this being such a lit, I don't know the word, litigative or whatever society, that we're renaming ourselves, but we're not saying, hey, we're the same people. So, Roxanne, very quickly, as she always does, found some language that we could add. It is an administrative change, and it basically says that those that are serving on the Pension Board will continue to serve on the Retirement Board until their terms expire and then, then they'll be reappointed. So, we don't have a situation where someone comes along and says, hey, wait a minute. You know, you're the Pension Board. There's no such thing anymore. So, again, that was a good, we caught that, and Roxanne made that change. And hopefully, everyone agrees that that is just administrative. So, the Pension Board, now becoming the Retirement Board, can continue with their business. Adding the two, adding the two alternate members. In doing some research, I realized that we were probably the only five-member commission or board in town that did not have alternate members. And we have had issues, you know, as you can imagine, your, your quorum is three. So, it doesn't take much, you know, or vacation or an illness, and you could not have a quorum. So, that change also will be very helpful, and we'll be looking to the council. We actually have someone to appoint already who has applied. Because that, that's all the comments I have.
Are there any, is there anyone else that comments on that particular ordinance?
Mike Cherry, if I could make a couple of comments?
Yes.
I gotta pull it up. The first sentence, much, much as Nate pointed out, the previous ordinance, when we took out that an ordinance established, it just kind of hangs there. Be it ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Leger, something. And then we go right into it. My problem really rests with, in Section 1, we define a defined benefit retirement plan, the pension plan, and a defined contribution retirement plan, the DC plan. That worked fine till I got to Section 4.1, where we were trying to describe the Salary Administrative and Professional Employees Plan, and suddenly, we called that a deferred compensation plan. I think it's still a defined contribution plan the way you defined it. Or if it's not, then we need to add a third definition. My other comment would be to avoid using federal designations for those plans. Because over the years, they've changed from 401 to 403 to 457 to 401 Roth. And if we just use the terms defined contribution and defined benefit, no matter what the feds do, you shouldn't have to change your ordinance. And that's the only comments I had.
Okay. Let, let me address those. First of all, I, I don't know if I agree with the first one about that top sentence. I don't know if, if that's the way it would be worded to say be it ordained, and then, you know, I don't know. That's, that's an administrative thing. I mean, saying it's a, it's, it's an ordinance, and then it's saying be it ordained. So, I'll leave that to the council. But in answer to your other questions, first of all, as far as the federal designations, if the federal government changes the codes that they call, for instance, a 457 plan has been in existence for, if not, if not 30 years, for a long time. If they change that, we would probably have to do something to, to take care of that. But the important one is there is in fact a reason, and just yesterday, we, we addressed it in the Pension Board, that it's specifically, the 401A is the town's money that the town puts into an account and they hold under the town's control until the employee is vested in that or until the employee leaves. And there are definitions of how much that employee is, I don't, in, in a sense, it's like, you'd call it matching funds. It's the town's match. And it is in fact deferred because the, the, the town is holding that money. Unlike the 457 where the employees do have some control over it and in certain circumstances can actually touch that money. This is in fact a deferred plan. They do not have control until they are vested or until they leave the company. And even at that point, they have to meet certain requirements. So, I, I would have to say that that is the correct wording, and that has been reviewed by our attorney.
Well, then maybe we need to define that plan up in that first paragraph so people know. Because we defined two plans, and then we add a third one in 401A. But that's administrative. Again, that's.
Well, actually, let me just look here for a second. No, actually, the defined contribution plan, which is defined in 4.1, if you go up to the top, it's in Section 1B. And then in 4.1, it defines what that is. And it happens to be made up of two parts. So, that's just my, that's just my take on it, is that in fact, it is defined as to, if you notice, in the first paragraph, it's a 457B. That's the employees' contributions. And then it's a 401A. And the reason, and the reason of the date is in there, and it talks about salary, is because, as I said, this was transitioned beginning in 2009. And then, union employees, per their contract, defines their eligibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments on that ordinance, please? Hearing none. Andre?
The third ordinance is an ordinance establishing a Youth and Social Services Board for the Town of Leger. We've had to do a good bit of work on, on rewording this. But the bottom line for this is combining social services with youth services, really for the sake of grants. The most of our youth services director's salary comes from grants, and that grant requires this language. So, you know, really, that, that's the most substantive change is, is just combining the two. You know, I guess that's, that's really, that's all that I think needs to be said. There's a lot there that can be read through.
Mary, did you have anything to add there? You're on mute, Mary.
Other than, it was the mayor who suggested back in May, excuse me, not May, in March, prior to the pandemic, that we combine these two. He had some ideas as a result of some problems that were going on in town with youth.
Okay. Any comments from the public on this particular ordinance?
Yeah. Sorry, I just, I have a couple of questions regarding the, the makeup of the committee. Which private youth-serving agency will be, do we have one already identified that we use? Or is there, is that going to be part of the, the board's responsibility to identify that?
Rebecca, where are you in the document?
So, it's, it's Section 5, Youth and Social Services Board Membership. And it indicates that there will be at least one representative from the school system, police, a private youth-serving agency, a youth currently under the age of 21, and a community at large member.
That came right from the statute, I believe, for the grants. I do remember that conversation early on, and it's right in the, I don't know if it's in the statute, but it's, it's in something that Kate showed us that said, this is what you need in a committee to get those particular grants. You need these specific people.
Okay. So, who's the, who's the, so my question, I, I get that it comes from the statute. But I guess my question is who, what agency is the private youth-serving agency? There's not a lot around.
No, there aren't. And in fact, Mary, do you remember who they gave us an example?
No, I do not.
Let me think, Rebecca, because I do.
It's also going to be difficult because whoever it is would have to be an elector of, of the town.
Exactly. Right.
But somebody did mention a couple of people in town, and that was early on in the conversation. And like I say, it's, it's something we have to put in there. But you're right, it could be a challenge.
Yeah. There was a number of people on the old Social Services Board who may be able to fit that description.
That was right.
Okay. Because I, I don't, I don't know if United Way is not considered a private youth-serving agency. And that's a, I don't, I don't believe it's classified as that.
You know, Rebecca, we may be able to get clarification for that when we go into our next meeting, because the mayor will be there.
Okay.
Let's see if we can get clarification on that for you.
Perfect. And then my, my only other question was, have, so again, because this comes from the statute, and we've already had a Social Services Board, who has been our youth representative? Do we have one currently? And/or how are we going to solicit the youth member? Is that a question for the mayor in the next meeting?
I don't believe, Kate, Kate attended the meetings, but I don't believe we had another youth services person.
No, this is a youth, who's under the age of 21.
Oh, that's right. That's great.
A child.
That's brand new. That's.
It is brand new. We, we.
We actually, it, the original was someone under 18. But then a person under the age of 18 couldn't, would not be an elector. So, we raised it to 21. And also, the person 18 may be going off to college when they graduated from high school. So, that was why 21 was picked.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments?
If I could, Linda, Mike Cherry. Same area that, that Rebecca's looking at. And I did, based on the comments, I did go back and look at Statute Section 1019M. And it refers to Section 54, and it may be buried in regulations of the state of Connecticut. But I would ask that you go look there because early on, when you started looking at all the regs, one of the problems was when we said somebody had to be a Democrat with a given age and a given organization, when there was a vacancy and you had to find another one of those, it was very difficult. So, I, I would like to see it say, to the extent possible, or make them ad hoc. And I would go find out where those words are exactly. Because even though it addresses it in general terms of the types of things a youth service board does, I couldn't find anything that says a youth service board must be made up of these types of people. And it just becomes very hard to fill those positions. If it has to be, it has to be.
I did see it in writing.
Okay. I, I don't doubt you.
It may be, it may have been, it may have been on the actual grant application.
Could be.
But, but again, we, we can get answers to those. They're all good questions.
Or find, you know, would they accept ad hoc or ex officio? Because then you could, you could word it such that they don't need to be Leger electors, and you could get somebody maybe from United Way or Ark of New London that are experts in the field, but not electors in Leger. I'd rather have the, the expert advising me than maybe having somebody less qualified just happens to be an elector.
Except that I wanted a farmer on the Farmers Market Committee from Preston. I thought that was a wonderful idea. We had a wonderful candidate, and the charter does not allow for that.
I know. I know. I know.
It's in the folder for next charter change.
But, you start looking at, a elector, minority representation, Police Department representative. I mean, it says representative, does that mean he needs to be a police officer? I don't know. You need, the mayor needs to define how he's going to do that.
Right.
Other than that, there's some no value-added comments. Roxanne, when you change the number of four to five, you have to go change five to six and six to seven for the sections. And there's a letter missing. Paragraph 1 Authority, Established Youth and Social Services Board. I think maybe you need an article in there. Established a Youth and Social Services Board. Like I said, no value added, but picky. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Any other comments?
Yeah. Lynda, this is John. A similar comment as the, for the Pension Board. Is it the idea that this is going to be a new commission or a new board, or are you going to, is it going to arise out of social services? Because if, in either case, you really should put a similar kind of note, if it's going to be the social services plus people, it continues. If not, you'd have to reappoint everyone.
Yeah. We're, it's not, it's not being continued. We would, the people that are on the current, and Mary, help me on this one, I think I've got this right, the people that are on the current social services boards could apply if they fit into any of these slots.
Correct. But also, their terms expired in June, so they'll have to start over.
Okay. And then, another comment or question, does it specify in the state statute that those unique people, like the youth, the individual, that they have to be full members, or can they be ex officio members? Because if you can somehow categorize them that they're non-voting members, it's possible they may not have to be electors. I mean, the only commission, the only committee I know that doesn't have town elector, town electors, is these building codes, appeal board, that can be from anywhere. So, again, does the state statute say these have to be full voting members, in the which case, they would have to be elected?
Okay. We can take a look at that. That's some really good things here.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay. Before I adjourn, just so you know, if you're signing on to the Town Council meeting, you've got, give Roxanne a few minutes, because she has to sign off, turn this meeting off, and start the other meeting. So, there may be a little bit of a delay, not by much, but there might be a little bit of a delay. So, this public hearing is adjourned, and we will see you on the other side.